Speaking of the zoning board in Washington, the city of Elizabeth and on October 13th, this meeting of the zoning board in Washington, the city of Elizabeth convened on this 13th day of June 2013, was duly analyzed and approved for the provisions of the Urban Public Neighbors Act as a regular meeting. Notes on said meeting was published in the Star Letter on February 18, 2013, and notices of the case we heard were also published in the Star Letter at least 10 days before that date. Secretary General.
Lieutenant Mickey Pobis.
Here.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Castro.
Here.
Commissioner DuBent.
Here.
Commissioner Silva.
Here.
Commissioner Ede.
Here.
Commissioner Tatum. Commissioner Connell.
Here.
Commissioner Gomez.
Here.
Commissioner Metellus. Chairman Kappa.
Here. All everyone please stand before the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the government from which it stands, one nation, united in its soul, with liberty and justice for all. May I mention this time of next week's vote will be submitted by Mr. Daniel F. Dandy.
Uh, should we say?
The motion by Commissioner Silva will have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Castro. Commissioner Terrible.
Lieutenant Mickey Pobis.
Aye.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Castro.
Aye.
Commissioner DuBent.
Aye.
Commissioner Silva.
Aye.
Commissioner Ede.
Aye.
Chairman Kappa.
Aye.
At this time, commissioners will go into the table of the city. There were four of our team. For 1175, 1172, Harris Street is a final, glad motion from me. Motion by Commissioner Castro will have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Silva and Secretary General.
Lieutenant Mickey Pobis.
Aye.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Castro.
Aye.
Commissioner DuBent.
Aye.
Commissioner Silva.
Aye.
Commissioner Ede.
Aye.
Chairman Kappa.
Aye.
Okay, this time, does anyone in the audience have any questions that they can post comments or direct comments, please forward. We do have a point that was supposed to be heard tonight, but the post comments of our next meeting, that's uh, Z zero eight thirteen, seven seventeen, seven nineteen, one program. That will be found on the agenda for our next regular meeting. Which is June 13th. I'm sorry, July.
July eighteen. Eighteen. I'm sorry, the next meeting is July. The next meeting is July eighteen.
That will be July eighteen.
Because of the holiday, the president of the department.
Thank you. The first application we're hearing tonight is Z zero seven thirteen, two oh one, two oh five, Elizabeth and Brandon. Turn to your seat over. Name and address by name.
My name is Member of the UCCI, member of G U R D U C C I. Two oh one, two oh five, Elizabeth and Brandon.
Remember seat.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Councilor, and Councilmen, we have a request for a proposal saving. Check here.
Push the button.
Good evening, Commissioners, Councilor, and Councilmen, we have a request for a proposal saving. Application for your seat is to uh, add parking to the existing restaurant, night club, on the corner of uh, Elizabeth Avenue and Second Street. Uh, which is usually as required from the property in the morning, because of the purpose of providing parking and moving site. At present time, there is no small street parking on site. In addition to the request for site, we would see intends to have a small outdoor patio area and also to provide uh, a decent kitchen area and a little bathroom space. Other than that, I would wish itself based on this space. Uh, there is only one or two barracks being requested, the multiple barracks that are uh, being requested for assistance conditions. Uh, we will try to create uh, buffering, landscaping, other landscaping improvements to essentially improve the site and enable this document for the use of the provision and by expansion of the site by refining the most site amenities and allow us to back up to the certain reasons that are. Uh, this is usually one of the older two oh ones, the Dallas, the Dallas.
Yes.
And that's on the corner of Second Street, March, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Elizabeth Avenue and Second Street.
Correct.
And at the present time, there is a restaurant in Night Club on that site.
Yes.
And the structure uh encompasses the entire lot.
Correct.
Lot has dimensions of sixty-four feet long, Elizabeth Avenue, one hundred feet long, second, etc.
Correct.
And you had the opportunity, over the last several years, to acquire two joint tracks, which are two oh seven, Elizabeth Avenue, etc.
Yes.
Is this thing to accommodate the residence?
Correct.
Lot dimensions of thirty-six by hundred feet. Also required two oh nine, Elizabeth Avenue, is consistent, single bedroom, long, lots size of fifty-five hundred feet.
Correct.
And I'm looking forward to the restaurant uh, and the door uh, at uh, the parking lot.
Thank you, yes.
And at the present time, I believe this is an open floor, so you are.
Correct.
Uh, and still proposing for this purpose, you can sell out all the hotels and provide for the parking area at the time.
Yes.
Two of those spaces would be in the cabin section.
Correct.
And also proposing landscaping and other major uses.
Yes.
I'm also proposing a small open air patio, which you intend to use for around the main.
Yes.
Uh, there is also a proposal for a laundry machine and four big piece of bathroom spaces.
Correct.
Uh, at the present time, where do you take the livers from the other street?
Yes.
And uh, will this prove that the most likely will take the livers off site?
Yeah, yes.
And uh, the livers will be in the water, so this is a correct, on the property.
Yes.
Uh, can you tell me about the livers in the city?
I don't know.
And what about the hours of operating on the livers?
Six to, six foot two, six foot three, I guess.
And have you thought about the outside of the livers, so we can find the outdoor patio?
Six foot five.
Now, you understand that that property group by the ABC should afford the roof that has a patio here?
Yes.
The lot will allow for also refrigerations of the ABC, including the boys.
Correct.
Um, now, is there going to be a dedicated refrigeration on site?
Yes.
And as I examine the plans, looking towards the rear, we totally imagine uh, of the rest.
Correct.
And should the board approve this application, do you intend to demolish the existing facilities as possible?
Yes, I do.
Do you have the permits as far as?
Correct.
Now, uh, the access to the balcony will be either with the basement?
Yes.
There's no outdoor areas, nothing outside. Nothing for the services.
May I ask another question, this place? I have a question. Chief. Um, you say there's a normal street park that you want to sell the ground?
No, no.
I'm looking at your establishment, moving to the left, there's a driveway with parking spaces, I understand.
Uh, that's my uh, my bike, uh, from, from two oh one, two oh seven, Elizabeth Avenue.
So that's all street park?
No, no, it's a driveway.
It's a building next door.
It's a building next door.
No, this is a parking, if you're parking on the left way, right next to it, before you enter the property.
Uh, it's some, some property, some property belongs to two oh one, Elizabeth Avenue, some of it belongs to two oh seven, Elizabeth Avenue. That's, that's the most important.
I'll not put it so bad. All right, any questions, this place?
Actually, I do have a question.
What do you mean?
Uh, I just want to know, how many of the people that you, the people that you employ at your place of business, are they all from the surrounding area from Elizabeth?
Yes.
Yeah. About how many people do you employ there?
I'm gonna, I'm not, I'm gonna.
Check.
Fifteen, twenty.
Fifty, twenty, thank you.
I'm sorry, if you need anything from here, if you have a question, please.
Thank you very much.
Uh, and speaking of Sir Andrew, uh, this is a terminology conflict on this part of the office. Uh, I'm still sticking to my initial indication that is a small street park in here. Any other questions, this place?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Castro.
Okay, I'm very familiar with the facility, I'm aware. In essence, what your proposal, if I can penetrate what you said before, is the elimination of two residential structures, right?
Yes.
So that you can add apartment to your facility.
Correct.
And I understand that when your place is open. That is specific section of the city is quite private, the only party.
Correct.
And this is what you propose to do.
Yes.
Commissioner Castro, just to be clear, in addition to that, he's also proposing outdoor patio to accompany that project. So it's not just a apartment area.
I am, I am, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Any other questions, commissioners? Any questions?
Right now.
James, all are clear, five five, which I will say, if you will listen. Uh, the chairman, Mr. Burks, intentions. Thank you. Something change since last night? Thank you.
Uh, Chair, can you read the site's application, application?
Yes, we can.
Describe the site, please.
Places of order are already, um, hesitant, an existing structure or whatever. Um, Second Street, Elizabeth Avenue, on the Elizabeth Avenue side, there were two adjacent residential lots. Uh, this application is proposing is to uh, remove two residential structures and create a parking Elizabeth Avenue side of the building. In addition to that, the existing uh, bathroom and kitchen in the building are kind of old and small. So the plan also poses to put, construct a new kitchen facility and a restroom facility. And on the side of that, we also show towards the front, on the left side of the building, on the Elizabeth Avenue side, to have a little patio. So. Um, the color scheme, first sheet is G zero zero zero, we have a last quarter, it was always on the mission. Essentially, we, there were, the first area is definitely part of the expansion of the use. This is a large area, which is a housing, um, and this is a club, so it's, it's like none of them will use, so maybe these areas were expanded as, or, or, or. Kitchen and bathroom, so there will be an expansion to that. All the other, the white areas that are shown on the existing conditions, uh, for the lot depth, uh, with, actually, we do comply with most of these, but some, some are existing areas. Uh, there's a front yard available, should be seven point six feet, the building is available to the side yard, which is typical for old buildings, built down, the old, the, the buildings are more against the front side. Parking, uh, there is, as I specified too, there was never been, been officially parking, uh, with the building, so listen. So you park, um, solely, uh, for this building. Uh, the candy can spaces, there, there's a back refuge, uh, common empty landscape, and the rest are screened from the neighborhood. So that's a quite open location.
Um, some of the areas are, is this a front?
Although the rest is correct, and also with distinct conditions essentially. Um, so when I change in the front of the solid building on the second, along Elizabeth Avenue. So those, they are areas, but they're distinct conditions, not expanding in those directions.
What part of the application is uh, concerned, offering, or, or?
Uh, as you look at the building from Second Avenue, with the parking lot is, um, and so to the rear with parking lot and the left side with parking lot, which were against the basis of residential properties. So then, rear parking lot and the left property, should definitely landscape and fence to screen the neighbors, forming a medical parking and reduce kind of, any interference to their parking, it's from inside.
Now, this is discussion about the form of this.
Yes, it is.
And you were making a light statement on build this uh, improvement of the site, out of less certain facts, of, 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 of.
Well, while we're, we're expanding the support of the, whether the, 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 the kitchen. Um, we're expanding the number of apartments out. Um, so, this application also proposes using this the first time, trying to add a parking lot. So the number of cars obviously removed from the hard street parking, turned onto the site. It's right, prior to this, essentially, the whole cars that came here, it's parking. This creates some parking, similar areas, it's still, you know, the numbers, um, you had to provide a little problem for the city to be twenty-seven. A little required parking, forty-seven cars, but as it exists today, it's really good for it anyway.
Um, you heard, we have to testify that at the present time, uh, lot is on the street. Uh, this, the building, on site, loading, loading trucks, on the site, and it appears to talk in the site.
If trucks come on, essentially, both hours, probably the day before they're open, and the trucking, um, actually getting into the parking area. And then it will fall directly into the side of the lot.
The site has not had, uh, a gold, um, slightly, and, 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 correct?
No, 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 no. That, that could now happen, it's, it's a, in forty block, kind of at the end of the block.
It's offered in addition from the property laws, and that's for, for.
Question for the group's application of the request. Can you come to negative backside?
I'm really foreseeing negative, but it is positive that we want to build a dedicated facility in the building. So the people had used the building by the residential facility. For the neighborhood, I think they should improve it in that and create parking to support the club. Which again, it moves that in towards the whole neighborhood.
And screening?
And of course, now the screening affects the owner of the site.
Questions and questions at this place?
I have a question.
Questions and questions?
Okay. So the applicant is proposing to demolish these two houses while parking to his facility.
Correct.
Now, we're talking about offering the section. My assumption is by building some sort of fence in the southeast section and the northeast section.
Essentially, when you're facing a property from Blizzard Avenue, even the parking lot is on the left of the building.
So?
We should, we should put a solid fence, a decorative fence along that left parking lot. Have a pure parking line, parking lot. In addition to landscaping in front of that, turn off this parking lot from residential properties.
Can you understand that? So the, the access to the parking would be from a, first rate. Now, by leaving these two houses, you're proposing the, the quality fence in which section of the perimeter?
On the left side of the parking lot.
Which is the southeast section of the?
I don't think so.
The southeast and the northeast section. Part of the left, like I said.
That would be the northwest and then we the northeast.
The northeast, eh? Southeast.
Well, the, 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 the arrow, which we saw, the arrow was on the forty-five hour vehicles in the site. So I would say so the northeast side is the pure parking lot. And the northwest side, the left side of the parking lot.
And the buffering fence that the applicant is proposing on the northwest and the?
Northeast.
Northeast is?
Build some decorative fence so when the car is pulled against it, the lighting will not go through.
Solid?
I think it should be solid because if it has spaces in it, the lighting could go through. So they have a lot of these, these kind of, they have a lot of them, white kind of line-up decorative fencing that you see on some of the properties. It's open picket fencing, which is decorative. What might happen is the car pulls up after hours or leaves late at night, the lighting could go through. So I think to protect the residential property, it should be solid.
I, I have a recommendation, I would like to add that.
Any other questions, questions?
I have a question.
Questions and answers?
In the proposed outdoor patio section, there's a gate in there. Is, is that gate going to be staffed by someone? How do you stop people from walking in off the street, you know, into, into that patio area?
I'd like to consult with you.
That's fine, yeah, that's fine.
All right, the question was asked as to the gate on patio area, is this gate going to be open? And now, how else can they be handled in terms of security?
I'm pretty sure, well, if you go from inside, the gate in front will be closed. But I will have the security there and I'll have a couple of girls to serve the tables. So it will be safe.
The gate won't be open?
No, the gate will be closed.
It's perfect.
Thank you.
That's from inside.
Question, Mr. President, and also, wherever adding to the outdoor patio. Could you please give us a little description of what the outdoor patio consists of?
In terms of materials?
Just a little bit of description, the papers and the?
I think the intent is, well, I wonder what to expect as one thing I decide as well. I think the intent is to make a decorative patio, something papers, as the floor surface of it, morning. Papers as the, as the floral surface, not asphalt. Then we have landscaping, enclosing patio. So that sometimes you see there, so a sense of, you know, enclosure downstairs in the middle of the parking lot.
Okay, I also agree that the security is going to be posted near the gate. Is the security also, is that that same security person to monitor the people inside the area?
That seems to be the only solution.
Yes.
Any other questions, questions?
Chairman, I have a question. A couple of questions. Mr. Vera, going back to this outdoor patio. It seems from your drawings that the patio is completely surrounded by a fence buffering of itself.
Essentially, it's landscaping that we're going to be surrounded with.
So it would be surrounded by landscaping?
Yes.
This is not like, they can put up a outdoor stand, put up a bay area, fill the parking lot with people dancing off the street type of thing?
No.
So is it going to be separated for a new designer?
Table, table, some chairs there, you know, umbrellas and, but it'll be, it's not a dance area, it will not be a noisy area.
Okay, and it has a?
Noisy area.
It won't be a noisy area, it has a buffering of itself that divides it for the parking lot.
Correct, it's, it's adjacent to the building and is remote from the residential areas as we began.
In, in addition to the building, it has no real entrance to the main building?
The only entrance would be if you came out of the side entrance of the building and then came into the back of the patio.
All right, so it's not like it turns a noisy side of the lounge, you just build it in the outdoor patio by itself?
No.
Okay, and the other fence that you mentioned surrounding the rear and the left side. Are you suggesting only a fence or a fence with bushes that will buffer any noise or traffic?
Both, fence and fence.
So it will be a solid fence?
Solid fence.
Solid fence, sideboard, solid fence. And you will also have additional landscaping to absorb any?
Noise.
Weight of the traffic or whatever.
Correct.
And it's one thing I can say, I'm sure you have it somewhere. Is there any light hanging? Additional lights?
The, there's, I don't have the?
Yeah, I understand.
The engineer, there's engineering crews that have some lighting information on it. And unfortunately, I don't have it. But there, there is a hand with a submission in the board, I believe you're set. There's some engineering crews have lighting on it. You're playing some other part?
I totally agree on this one, asking a simple question, I'm waiting to hear your part. I'm pretty sure that any lights will be directed away from the?
Any lights that, that the lighting engineer put on will be directed towards this property and then shielded so that we don't get over for lighting into a residential property.
Thank you.
Questions and answers?
I'm sorry, question, answer it now?
Let me, let me address a concern that I have. So we can deal with this concern right now and later. I personally do not want to see a plastic fence around the perimeter of the property. That's one. Two, bottom board is also out of the equation. A decorative island fence is not possible because it will not provide enough buffering from the parking to the surrounding properties. Am I correct?
Well, it will not hundred percent stop infiltration of lights.
So I, I have a suggestion, and this will, of course, provide that all the issues associated with the application are addressed. All the issues that other commissioners may have. Why don't you build, or why does the applicant build a three or four feet high maison structure around the southeast and northeast? The main property area?
No, we'll say both sides of parking lot.
Well, I'm talking about?
Talking the side?
The side and the front. A three or four feet high maison structure. That will make the property look nice. And then above that, a two or three feet high, the quality of height. I'm sure everybody knows from the, from the, from my experience with the?
With what? Say that again.
He's a surgeon.
Bankrupt?
This is a surgery that I, I gave it to you. I need to feed that oil boy, Mr.?
I'm able to see this condition, but the applicant has already conceded that he's willing to do exactly that. Perhaps a four foot high masonry wall, decorative fence?
Above that?
On the northeast and northwest.
I don't even know the facing, I'm not even sure.
And also facing was the? I'm, I'm sorry, since we have a clarification, exactly where you're proposing, Commissioner, with this fence?
The southeast. Southeast or northeast?
Oh, it's, it's the north?
The, the perimeter of the, of the parking lot. The full perimeter of the parking lot. A three or four feet high maison structure.
That's fine, so this would be surrounding the parking lot?
Surrounding the parking lot.
The housing?
This is a, we're outside and saying a three or four feet masonry wall with a fence on top.
Right, with a, with a six feet. We can't go higher than six, when it's to be a three?
All right, we never want that.
Four or two foot fence, but we can't go more than six feet.
All right, we never want that six feet in the rear or the side.
No, I don't think.
So maybe I just need to go back and forth.
No, this is four or five fence or, or a final fence within six feet, also? That's an actual fence?
And here we also have bushes. All over here.
So, so four by four measure. It is going to be a four feet high structure around the perimeter of the parking lot and a two feet high for the entire.
Well, can we use stipulating perhaps because it's six feet total, the, the, it might be three and a half and two and a half. I'm not sure how that necessarily pans out, but?
Well, I think, I think what Commissioner Castro was really getting at here is that he doesn't want lights filtering into the neighbors' houses and driveways in the middle of the night. So you can't just, we need a specific how high the schools for the things to buffer the lights. We're not, we're not going to give you approval based on whether it's six feet, seven feet, eight feet.
No, it was not.
This is a, this is a, I'm applying to a regular car.
Well, a three foot high, three feet high would actually block most cars that we see through. We can make it a little bit higher because a van falls in or a pickup truck where the lights are higher. So this way, we go to three and a half feet, I think would, would pretty much block everything.
That sounds like a good idea.
Commissioner, something?
When you say it's going to close at ten, does that mean that no one else is allowed there after ten? It's exposed off?
Yes. Yes, it will be closed at ten o'clock?
Yes.
The time?
Sorry.
The outdoor patio?
Yes, sorry.
Commissioner, any other questions?
I have a question. Personally, I'm actually, I didn't see a legend of a tar, I see a lot of bushes and trunks. You know, I don't know who they are, and then there are, you know, what species they are. For a line of the middle, I'm not sure. Do you park it somewhere?
The noise level here that we're talking about is basically the people at dinner talking. We know music, no DJ, no speakers outside, some music inside, nothing like that. Thank you very much.
Okay, now, Commissioner. Any other questions?
I share your concerns, however, I do want to mention the fact that this album, Daniel, is the way where it was placed, it was very, it's right out on the street. It's really far away from the river problem, it's where the sidewalk is. If there were to make any noise to affect those neighbors, they really would have made a lot of noise.
Which is true.
There is, there is a noise more than is in the city. Uh, I understand your concern, but, I mean, I'm taking this for granted.
Commissioners, any questions?
I've got a question.
Yes, Mr. President.
Uh, between the parking lot and the patio, is going to be installed some sort of security system?
Yeah.
For the security of the neighbors or the people?
Yes, sir.
There are security cameras outside the house.
Oh.
They will consider that part of the ABC process.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Uh, there's no secret, two questions. Uh, is there any security going on in the parking lot, giving it a police walk around? Or the cars are parked in there?
I'm not sure exactly what the act of, so, post terms of security, but I do know by order of the fact that he has a legal license, he's going to have to maintain security on site. Uh, and obviously, he doesn't take that any security because of playing the ABC license in general.
So, any ground that is, any problems in the parking lot that affect his business and who affects his legal license?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You don't want me to put the local ABC.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Thank you. At this time, if there are any members of the public which wants to speak before or against this application, please come forward. One at a time, please, a little complicated.
Ah?
Forward, forward, sir.
Here?
No, over here. Raise your right hand, if you'd stop this square, the best one for your review. If you have any thoughts, if you have anything else to do.
Hi.
Take your microphone, sit down, state your name, spell your name, give your address.
My name is Billson Ross. I own a building under.
Spell your name, say it. How many parts are there?
J O S T E R C I A.
Yes.
I own a building 201, 205, Marshall Street.
Okay, I see.
Now, I think I really am a very curious person. Whatever since the 12th that started, nothing but the noise, people roaming the streets, barking in front of my building, barking with staff at closing time. All the neighbors around, still here, they dancing late night, the noise through the building as they sit down, they hope he's doing nothing about it. Not watching, I mean, he didn't want to speak, do all right, but he still didn't move under the fighting, the drinking, urination in the yard, I don't believe in everything. What did he go to do about that? And if you put somebody out of the back, you come back, they'll start off on a news day, no business, come in early, it ain't going to happen. Because they'll start, you think people start drinking, partying, the noise will come, act like you could have part of the time as a citizen. I've done quite a lot to say, I mean, I don't know what people are going to do.
Are there any other members of the public which would address this point before this application, please come forward? Raise your right hand, if you'd stop this square, if you have any questions. Sit down, please, state your name, spell your name and give your address.
John Skorru, E S K I. 208 Marshall Street. John Tom.
Thank you. Okay, John. John.
This is a position of, I'm coming tomorrow. Uh, something to do there. Uh, I believe the place on the general for the past thirteen years. I like to know about the movement this year, the area downstairs, also I know that this area downstairs of the general do the case enforcement of the building itself. So, you put a damn four down there, then you walk down there. Number two, when these people put up the fence that they have around, they're going. I like to know why, it only covers three houses, then there's a gap too, and then it covers the funeral hall. Number three, last year, when they had their monthly, not monthly, but yearly, whatever you want to call it, the noise was so loud, it was just exclamation. Uh, my dishes, houses were rattling, windows were rattling, the noise was louder than, uh, sirens from the fire trucks, the police vans, airplanes, it sounded like everything. And number four, I want to know who gave them the right to cut branches off my tree and sprain the trees from my tree, both their visits. Uh, on weekends, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, anytime the general is in operation, sometimes it is, sometimes it's not, I get packages in my back garden and the front garden, cans, bottles, plates, etc. In the front, they leave me a couple cans of beer or bottles of booze, empty, but it's what they're doing. Parking, parking is not a business anytime the general is open. If you just happen to go while you're pushing a tackle or you need to, you have to go to four blocks or a parking lot. Maybe you come back at three o'clock in the morning and find something, maybe you can't. It's not, it's your problem, it's not theirs. I understand that when you live in the city of general, you have to put out the noise. Noise is noise, like the exclamation, noise is exclamation, noise, period. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other members of the public which would address this point, please come forward? Raise your right hand, if you'd stop this square. State your name, state your address.
G, G, M, A, Rizzo, R I, Z Z, O L O, 222 Elizabeth.
Thank you.
My family and I have lived here for the past close to twenty years, this address, and the past thirteen years that the club has been there, as the other speakers have said, is basically an establishment of the neighborhood. Our concerns, um, about these renovations that we're hearing about is, while they seem to provide some visual appeal to the neighborhood and obviously some extreme benefits to the owner, I agree that they don't provide any benefit whatsoever to the neighborhood, uh, in general grammar. The neighborhood is comprised of elderly people, children, working class people, none of whom are customers of the business. I would see where any of these things that are being discussed in any way. Um, I've heard discussion about how, um, light will be controlled, over and after, about how sound will be controlled. The sound can do this club as it is today, is, as the other speakers have mentioned, absolutely very well. Um, many times, the front door of the club is actually left open to let some circulation, the sound then becomes that much worse to the houses and the neighborhood. And once the club closes, as the other speakers have said, is, is basically like a freefall of people just bringing their AC TV, um, relaxes the security, people, uh, bring open their containers outside and leave them wherever they have to enter or park. So, I do see where the additional party would benefit those people, see the usage spaces or the use of my home, the driveway, which we're using some days right now. Um, I don't think that the benefits are, I don't think there are any benefits for what you mean, uh, like there.
Thank you, sir. Raise your right hand, if you'd stop this square. State your name, state your address.
Maria Rizzolo, R I, A, R I, Z Z, O L O, 222 Elizabeth. My husband just spoke, he forgot to mention that when the club closes, um, the fight set right down, we have had to call the cops at three o'clock in the morning, four o'clock in the morning, to wait for them to show up, because the fights that go down the street, they just stay in front of our house, and they proceed to just argue it out, um, they claim to have security, we see the bathroom, they claim to say that there should have a police car parked outside, we've never seen them. For thirteen years, we've had commotions occur that wake up, that wake up the working people, they wake us up in the middle of the night, to those who have to go work instead. Couple years ago, we've seen a fight that broke out that actually caused one gentleman to shoot his girlfriend in one of our house. But, the violence that comes from all this club is not something that benefits the neighborhood. The parking lot, you know, when he asked to help us out with the parking situation, but he never addressed that issue, and I think that to believe that he's doing this with the kids, with the outside, and you came in, I, I've seen the yearly, his yearly, uh, activity that he performs, starts early in the morning, and it's really late, and then, again, it's, I hardly see any kids going in or out of that place, the kind of people that actually visit the establishment, um, they don't live around there, we have to, we have to deal with the problem.
Are there any other members of the public which would speak, please come forward? State your name, state your address.
Carlos Torres, C E R, L O S, T O, R, N, S, 137 4th Street.
Uh, as, as the first ward goes, my concern is the residents of the first ward.
Uh, I've been in office for five years now, so, I truly believe by the addition of the parking lot, will eliminate everything, but it will eliminate some of the issues with the garbage, where I know customers come and they like to drink before they get to the bar, uh, so they dump their garbage in front of residents' homes, uh, it will create marketing, uh, I, I believe it will isolate people, uh, customers actually walking down random streets, starting fights, young lady said, uh, fighting in front of her house, it would isolate them and put them in one area, it would exit from the parking lot, enter from the parking lot, uh, it would eliminate people who are smoking and want to talk, that would all be done in the parking lot. I talked to the owner of the lab, he is concerned about the residents, this is my first time hearing about the noise issue, which I will deal with it later, but my concern is for the residents, and that's all. Thank you for so much, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any other members of the public which would speak at this time, please come forward? Raise your right hand, if you'd stop this square. State your name, state your address.
Stephanie Akavis, Akavis is G O N, C A L, V D S, I reside at 202 Marshall Street. Um, I've been living here for the past eighteen years, so, since, um, I've had to live for the past thirteen years, I'm basically just sort of people everybody else says on the neighborhood, um, I do believe that the parking lot will help out with us, it will have the residents having no parking spaces, um, hopefully it will have people blocking their driveway that's happened in the past. Our concern is others, it is a safety, them having just like a open hour, they do try to secure it, like the old person who's just before me, there are fights every school weekend, there are people with weapons, using bats, you see knives, they pull down in the house, I call the cops, we made it early in the morning, it's just going, going on. Um, the noise, the patio, I don't see how that's going to help us out, unfortunately, until ten o'clock, like you said, people who work, even on weekends or weekends, people who work, until ten o'clock, unfortunately, I think that's a way of cutting it to post. Until eight o'clock, we think that's a possibility, but unfortunately, people who have, who kids, I don't see kids going on there, um, there is a outbreak, I expect, so I don't see how that's going to be beneficial, and that's like, correct.
Are there any other members of the public at this time which would address this point?
Just a voice check, 211 Marshall Street. C H S T E R, W I M S, Z Z Z K.
Z Z Z K?
Z Z Z K.
C. Z K. E. Your address?
Uh, 211 Marshall Street. Okay, we reside at, I guess, that's, that's just over the years, it's almost up alive, and, uh, you know, I, I just want to reiterate, I said.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding what you're saying.
I just want to reiterate, everything that, yes, you know, my fellow neighbors have pretty much said, often times, uh, anywhere, took action, you know, ten minute, three o'clock in the morning, I found myself actually wide awake, because I hear, I guess, the base alarm going off, uh, I recall, you know, many, many nights I've lost sleep, you know, I, uh, I've seen, again, I guess, you know, fights, you know, still over, you know, to Marshall Street. You know, there's, there's not a lot of, I do, I do reiterate that there are, you know, some benefits, you know, the parking, you know, but again, you know, the patio, uh, probably has to go, uh, probably the same thing with probably with the wall, I guess that's more, not earlier, I think, you know, three, four feet is probably sufficient, you know? You know, the headlights, you can even follow, I guess, you know, trucks, you know, so I'm probably, you know, easily surpass that, uh, you know, that's all I have, thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public which would address this point at this time? C, sir?
I am.
Stand in seat, pick up your microphone, name and address, spell your name.
Robert Socas, N O S O C A S A, I have access to 7th Marshall Street, Elizabeth, I reside in Harold and Mike, and since thirteen years, this complex has been a bar, isn't a nightmare to be in the neighborhood. Uh, I like to reiterate everything the other, uh, people have mentioned already, uh, you know, my driveway has been blocked many, many nights, uh, there's been excessive noise, and, uh, my guess is, uh, the owner here, uh, that he had outside and came this past year, uh, using not only the bar area, but also the adjoining residential areas, has knocked down, where their parties here with loud music lasting all day long. Did you have those parties?
What I'm going to do is I'm going to ask that question, did, did, did you indicate parties, I understand, Mr. President?
Number one, so, I'm not trying to, that's number one, number two.
Okay, Mr. President, then why don't you ask a question, Mr. President? You answered a question, thank you. Uh, from that one, do you have any questions, Mr. President, just?
Uh, no, I'm not.
Okay, okay, please.
Can you answer that question before me?
Well, here, I understand that it does not mean asking a question.
Well, Mr. President, they also stated they had a permit for their activity, and know that they did. Okay, so there was a permit taken from the city for an outdoor activity, or that is a specific function, you cannot have an activity like that where it is lawful, sort of, without special permit, so if he did have a special permit for that activity?
And the activity covered the residential properties as well?
There's a portion of this property that joins the structure, uh, there's a portion that's on property and health, so it was all on property, all by the same.
I think there were witnesses to testify here, the opposition testified also to the fact that those parties were of the entire property, not in the bar area, but it's residential properties that are purchasing, that's the nine man.
Is one end there, the special permit, it's not a specific activity that has a non knowing history?
It is not only one, necessarily, uh, we don't think, uh, is there a correlation with this application, but yes, yes, for the, for the prior, uh, experience, uh, with the neighborhood, he has shown us absolutely no respect. You call his partner, calm down music, no response, you call the police department, no response, all day long, chatting of dishes in your house, how did you like to live there? If this is approved, does not get approved, this is approved? Mr. Chairman? He shows a character of the war as well to the neighborhood, and I just tell our , uh, councilman in the first ward, that he's promised, uh, the non death of the neighbors, and I think, uh, a couple of votes, just went south.
Okay, so, that's not the form here, if you have an issue with the council, you can address that in person, that's not the form here. Commissioner, uh, Councilman?
I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, this is for the unit, the unit's application, not issues that do not protect this application.
Uh, I have to disagree with you, Commissioner, I think, I think it does apply, I think if this, if this activity is going on now, without additional open space, and additional, uh, patio area, I can only imagine what would happen, should this board approve that kind of applications, so on that, on that point, I disagree with you.
I have given, Mr. Chairman, I also disagree with you, respectful, I think that, like, Mr. President.
We're going to wait until we go into closed session and discuss this.
Thank you.
Excuse me, we're going to wait until we go into closed session and discuss this.
Chairman, I'm sorry, I have to write the last question, and I have to.
No, no, Mr. President, you're out of order, actually, we're not in closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I am a member of the board, I have to write this thing without discussion.
You certainly will get that, you will get that option, you know, we're going to close session.
I'm not.
This is the open, open speaking session of the meeting.
And I have to write this thing, Mr. Chairman.
And you will get that option, you will get that, continue, sir.
Well, in terms of the residents, uh, putting it in the rear of the crime downs, you know, the neighbors, putting it in the rear of the crime down, of the residents, uh, right now, uh, you know, every time you close a bar, you're, it's very likely in the morning to be, uh, uh, the landscape, uh, or into, uh, whatever the purpose is of the bar, uh, so, uh, putting a technical fence around our future, this, the neighbors, one bit, that's, uh, for, uh, landscape, doesn't provide any noise barrier for the damage here. You're displaying yourself, you consider, uh, a little landscape as a noise barrier, that, and the height of fence, I don't see why it can go sixteen. Mr. Chairman, may I answer a couple of questions? Uh, the fence, the six quarter fence, as the regulation from the city, they cannot put in the high. Are you concerned with the refuge as far as, uh, trash, trash, when you pick up? Could be in the worst hours, late at night, early in the morning, uh, you know, with the, uh, big dump trucks coming in there, just going to disturb, I'm sorry, going to look on the, on the records, pick up the, uh, records from the bar.
All right, Commissioner, we're going to hold that off again until our closed session, until our, our closed session. Okay?
Okay, uh, I may, what was it, uh, we, we do share what the neighbors concerned, and you brought up a good point, you have problems in this area with the, uh, this order, but before, we cannot accept, actually, your accusations without allowing him to defend himself, and this is not the place to move back. Why, if you just answered a question? I'm sorry? If you just answered a question or like more, I'm just wanting to, as the rent neighbor, who expresses the fact that this is not a forum to accuse or defend with something that has nothing to do with the city occupation, I mean, you don't have to have that. It, it does have to, because this former condo indicates what's he going to do in the future, if you give him a inch, he's going to go wild.
Okay, we're going to end this conversation with that.
I just.
If you have any more issues?
Um, only against this outside patio.
Boy, we're not going to do that, okay, I'm just going to stop, I'm very concerned. Do you wish to continue with any more?
Uh, uh, the parking, we come. But, my fear is that, as he has an association, he's using the residential properties now in the bar area, you give us patio, it's not one of these panics, we're using patio, we must park it, and how are we going to stop doing that? You, if we approve this, we're going to have tight regulations within the residential, if I may, this is an application.
Okay, Commissioner, we're not going to stop, we're, we're not going to do dialogue here, this is already, I'm like, I'm like, you're going to, if you hold your thought of what we're going to do, we're going to.
I'll, you'll hear my vote.
I can hear your concerns, I'm saying, this is not a forum to go back and forth, this is a forum to hear your concerns, and for the board to take action, consideration.
My concern is that if you do approve this, which I only guess, that you put tight regulations in an approval that the neighborhood can use that resolution, don't the board can stop it?
Well.
Especially on the noise issues, on the excessive partying outside, we have, you know, uh, he's doing it now, and what he's telling you is, you know, that he's better entertain for children, so far, so you aren't going to allow that. So, he's fooling you, absolutely fooling you.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Couple of questions?
This is not a forum for.
Right across the center, that's actually.
All right, Commissioner.
Your license is driving, same turn, and you must be so.
Yes.
You know the fact where the turn people, why these wars have passed, is that right?
Yes.
What was that?
My name is Ward.
How long have you been in the jury?
Four years.
And, you don't care about that, so, you? You know, it's any politics, right?
And so, why?
You know, the ABC. Do you recall taking the ABC that holds the license? Do you know many complaints that have been filed against your position? You have a question, I ask you something.
Mean you want me to file one?
No, I wonder why this is all the most consistent thirteen years. We never filed the appropriate, so the ABC. It's not the appropriate place for one of us. Oh, I have your station.
I think, I could, I could lie on there if you wanted to.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You want me to go the extra mile?
All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks for being excited.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, the public, you can address this board.
I have something to say.
I'm going to the closed session. Is seeing other residents, just seeing?
It takes a basis by any of your address.
I may, Mr. Norman, I'm avoiding the N. As they are speaking, S C C Y U I B L.
Spell that again.
S C C Y U I B L.
Very good space.
Two hundred and ninety-three. I am reading this forty-five minutes. Before you can say, okay, okay, another five minutes is never seen hours, okay, but you...
Sorry, sorry, this is, this is, this one.
I'm reading forty-five minutes. With now is almost five minutes. To make a noise, but two minutes, two minutes like forty, certainly the open. Don't put the back, rest of the land is open.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I can't understand this. One should put it, uh, the sun.
Okay. Two minutes, right, now, the seven days. Don't back for the rest of the open.
So I can understand that. What do I get next? I can't understand that, but it's...
Okay, don't let it open. The back is open, still don't understand.
He's saying, I have to... So just be all right, I'm gonna try, I must do it again, and the council can do the best. Sorry.
Okay, the door for the rest of the zone. They play the music. Very nice, but two minutes like the morning, the break. Okay. He's never seen a moment of window to hear my guess of the insight. This is not done. Okay, the people in the rest of the number, so far, they come to the party. Open the window, open the door, cool. And start the system of the mouse, for this to fall asleep now. This is every day, okay, I understand, they play something for this. Every day of ten, seven days. People to work, they can come and contact the movement for the working, I think. He's never seen for five or six days. He's now making both hands. We did try getting him and tried to allow to three lines, the glass, they make a noise, but they're not. He know they have a cross to protect the...
And what?
I'm giving to the cross, but it's not a better way to say it. He's had no friends, not his old friends, it's all friends, it's all broken. I'm thinking time because the police, they get the money. Throw out everything, put the table, in my degree. They put it coming throughout the my backyard. Our energy for your dead, dead. You know, he's not my realistic. Nobody see nothing with this. I understand this, this is business. This is the nature of this, after that, sorry. Okay, can you back my question?
All right, is there any other comments, any different concerns, or want to express something? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the policy inside of this meeting. Mr. Rob.
Chairman, now, Mr. Guuduchi's not applying to the concerns of the neighbors. And patio, part of the application, is not under the risk of work, part of this application. He's willing to remove patio and disperse regarding the whole parking lot, the mansion, the kitchen, and the bathroom areas. And perhaps the architect eliminated patio, applies to the marking. That would be in addition to the number nineteen spaces proposed. So we're interested in that, we're willing to give up the outdoor patio.
All right, Commissioners, Mr. Adelso says, why is it moving up the paddocks? The paddocks is a faulty danger on this application.
So we are willing to...
So we are willing, all right, so we are willing, all right.
So we actually will do the parking?
What we're talking about now is parking.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, that's, Mr. Chairman.
I have noticed a time being much longer of neighbors, the noise. That is not going to go away with denying this application. As a matter of fact, it will continue. If we approve this application, whatever problems exist will be secluded in one section, the four. I personally didn't have any problem with the outdoor patio. The applicant promised that he would not bring any type of speakers, live entertainment, radios. He indicated that this patio would be used for place tables for people to dine. As a matter of fact, he's proposing to expand this region, which indicates to me that he is expanding his dining facilities. I personally don't have any problem with the patio. And I didn't have any problem with him closing the patio. As long as he would not bring any type of outdoor entertainment. And as far as the parking, many of the neighbors complained that one of them, as a matter of fact, indicated that you had to park three or four blocks away from where they eat because they couldn't find any parking to park their own cars. By approving this application, this applicant or the patterns that would be coming to the facility will be parking in his facility. I suggested four feet of tile measuring wall around the parking area with a two-foot tall decorative fence, which in essence will make the proposed parking lot look nice. Will offer any lights. Of course, I, I, I think that this application will benefit the neighborhood, will benefit and will help resolve the problems that is, that the neighbors are currently complaining about. So if the applicant wants to remove his outdoor patio, that's, that's his, his choice. I don't have any problem with the proposed outdoor patio.
Commissioner, your next.
All the residents that came here, speak in front of our board, had two common themes between all. Number one was parking and number two was noise. I'll have to echo what my colleague next to me said in terms of if this application gets denied, the noise issue will not go away. I think that that issue is something that needs to be dealt with, maybe in a different form, but definitely not here as far as the existing noise from the existing businesses there. The other problem that was echoed here in our chambers is that of parking. And I, I can only but think that by the addition of this parking lot, that the impact of parking on the surrounding residents would be lessened. That's, I mean, it's the only way that it makes sense to me, at least. With parking on his own lot would take away people parking on Marshall Street and all the other surrounding areas. A, as far as, you know, the noise is concerned, I've heard a couple of people talk about garbage, the way it's being thrown out at night and making noise at three or four in the morning when it's being cleaned up. I, I think maybe, and again, I don't know what the form is for that, but I think that Mr. Guuduchi should probably take the neighborhood into consideration at the end of the night, maybe when he's cleaned up. As far as the noise stuff is concerned, that's something that the neighbors have to take up in a different form and really address that with this, Chairman. And all of you live in this neighborhood. You have to be able to coexist. Having an adversarial relationship with someone with a business there, it's not gonna help anyone. I just think that there's a different form for that and something needs to be done because I think that the residents have a real concern. But going back to this application, I have to say that beyond the parking lot, which I think will benefit the residents, the neighborhood, I don't see where the amount of noise that would be coming out of a, of a, of an outdoor patio would create that much more noise than's already existing without speakers, without live entertainment, or without anything else like that. I think that outside patio, which I'll say I'm opposed to, would probably only put Mr. Guuduchi at risk of having any type of, of, of police action, you know, levied against him because it would just create noise outside and create more problems for him in terms of the residents' quality. So that's the position he wants to put himself in. But again, I think that the overall application, the way it stands here in front of us, whether or not Mr. Guuduchi wants to remove that outside patio or not, I think that between the fence, the four-foot wall, the landscaping, and of course, the principal part here is parking, I think will benefit the residents in terms of this business's overall impact. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, how can I help?
Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to echo, double echo, my fellow colleagues' opinions without having to repeat what they have already said. One thing I can say is this. Creating a parking lot, obviously, is taking cars out of the street, helping the neighbors. Second, it's creating a job or two of security that today the neighbors are saying, well, two, three o'clock in the morning, there's problems here and there. Well, guess what? Not even parking. There has to be someone there outside. The owner stated he's good with security. Putting an outside patio, he stayed in the music. He stayed at ten o'clock at night. It's a family, it's a family environment. I had no objection to that before that evening. Now, also, one of the neighbors came out and said that there's refuge, class. True, I, I, there, I sort of agree. But there, the owner could also turn around and reschedule or schedule to pick up, not all hours, but during the day. Well, the neighbor's been sleeping. The security is very important here. And this is one, if I am going to approve or vote in favor, I need to know that there's gonna be security there and not even from the time someone walks in to the time someone drives out. The fence is a security plus for the neighborhood. It encloses and gives a privacy not only, not only to the business, but to the neighbors. Security all around. Security is very important, and that's what I'm really in favor of here. If the security is there, then I think it's about that application because the noise is not going away. We keep not approve this application today, you can live with what's existed. I think if anything, it's gonna help the neighborhood. Thank you.
Commissioner, your next.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I really feel for the neighbors. They're very concerned, they have very specific concerns. One of their concerns has to do with the parking outside. And the main thing that we're looking here is adding parking or bringing the parking into the problem, which is also going to bring the responsibility of what happened into the parking lot, to the business owner. It's not only gonna be on a street corner or in front of the, the residents' homes. A lot of the parking and the problems that go with those parks are gonna be the problems of the business owner. I'm not sure that he knows what he's getting into. We are not adding to the capacity of a lounge. We're not allowing anything to go on in the parking lot. Only parking. So I, I think it will benefit today to bring all this parking into the problem and to give the owner the responsibility that go along with adding cars in these problem, which is, I hope, works out for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Commissioner Sol.
I really just want to add that I don't think we're used to discussing the noise.
Sorry, Commissioner.
Sorry. We're not here to discuss the noise because I'm not a police officer. I can't go and stop the most happening. That's something that you guys really have to deal with somewhere else. We're here to deal with patio and parking. Parking's beneficial. I live across the street from a restaurant that has patio, where people eat there all the time. I have a mother there because we're eating, and they, and me and my children don't realize it there. So I don't have a problem with patio. Whatever happens to safety, and that's something internal, and that's something that we can't afford to disapprove of, that's security inside facility. I really have nothing to do with this. I don't have a problem with patio, and I love parking.
Just so the Commissioners are clear, the patio, which is a lawful cable, the patio is not going to require this application. Restricting parking, sorry, sorry, closed session.
We also want to make clear that patio, parks, well, they're dealing with.
But I was saying, the applicant was true to that.
It's silent.
Commissioner.
I agree, the parking is definitely repurposed, except for the track from the area. It will also repurpose, so there's finding, prompt that goes on the area. So the park is definitely a plus. So, yeah, we'll read through this with the Commissioners.
Commissioner, now.
I can say the same thing that I read with the Commissioners, so I have a fair notification.
Commissioner, now.
Well, the issue was, you know, the parking lot on the patio. And I agree with the Commissioners too.
We're only about this parking lot, so you understand. Okay? I have issues with this application. Certainly exists this concern, weighs heavily. There are two thousand miles to see. And if I was a Councilman, I heard these kind of complaints, I'd be a little concerned. Like my fellow Commissioners stated, that is not what this board is here to do. There are other avenues you can pursue. Councilman Torres has already offered to speak with any resident that wishes to talk with him. There is an ABC board in the city where you can lodge complaints. And from what I understand, they're pretty straightforward. I understand, they're pretty straightforward. So you do have avenues, um, for your complaints. And I highly recommend us to take those avenues. The noise was issued and I had a problem with this patio. Patio is around walls of the table, so the audience understands. This is strictly a parking lot situation. The parking lot, I think, will help you reduce the number of cars that are parked in your homes. It will contain, de-traffick a bunch of this love. Should things like gatherings in the parking lot occur, uh, parties going on in the parking lot, your recourse is to contact your council, to contact the police department, to contact the neighbor's office, and lodge those complaints with them. And believe me, they will be heard. Because I think both councilmen show a bravery, that is, people who live in the neighborhood, that they press this over anything else. With that said, again, on those new major applications, I do believe with the elimination of the patio and the additional parking, it will help you. And please, I can't deny that. If there's a problem, call, call the police, keep calling. That's what they're there for. Go to the ABC or just like you came here tonight. They will listen to you. Mr. Gudducci does not have the right to disrupt the quality of life. And if he's doing that, then it is a big mistake. Mr. Secretary, have a motion.
Mr. Chairman. Can we say?
Chairman, Commissioner.
Ladies and gentlemen, the applicant amended the, uh, the application on the fly because withdrew the patio. This application is preliminary final. Since we don't have a set of.
It's been all leaveful, Mary.
Preliminary.
Only for preliminary because of the fact that we have a set of plans for a sort of deal.
Mayor.
Commissioner.
The applicant indicated that he is willing to remove the patio.
That's correct.
He never said, "I want to remove the patio." And I want to be clear.
It was attorney said, Mr. Captain.
Well, the attorney, if I'm not mistaken, said that the applicant is willing to remove the patio. So I would like to hear confirmation if we're going to approve or disapprove this application with or without the patio.
The patio was the table.
What that was.
I don't, I don't understand what you don't understand. Listen, the applicant withdrew the patio, part of the application. We're not gonna back that one now. And because we have some additional commentary to do it, I'm gonna ask for a vote on this application for strictly the parking without the patio.
We are, we're in a closed session. So I need clarification.
That's right. We're in a closed session, so we're done with testimony.
I need clarification. The applicant has in fact withdrawn the patio.
Doing to. The attorney was confident that the client and the applicant had referred to clear to remove the patio.
It appears to me that you want that patio out of the middle.
The, it's the applicant that reported it. The applicant is what reported.
Can, can we hear from our attorney?
Yes.
I'm not sure what the issue is, George. Uh, the applicant's attorney said that they, he wanted to remove the patio. I don't see that we need more testimony to that effect. Um, I, I'm not sure. It'll be in the resolution, so it's not like it can be changed in any way. It'll be in the resolution that you approve. I, I don't know what the issue is.
Do I have a motion? We go approve of the last application?
I moved a motion to approve the application. The way was presented.
No, no, Commissioner, that's not the way it's gonna go down. I'm sorry. You're trying, you're trying to skirt the issue, and I'm not gonna allow that. The application stands as only a parking lot. That's it. If he wants to come back in future time and propose a patio, he has every right to this.
Mr. Chairman, you have the right to vote against my motion, and you can ask it, but not to oppose our, uh, presentation.
Did you make a motion?
Well, I'm making a motion. You cannot modify my motion.
The motion? You're modifying my motion. I said, can you back it back in when the patio was removed? Am, am I mistaken, Commissioners?
Why don't you ask that?
The attorney just called for it.
I'm not gonna plot a question. Mr. Ray, can you clarify for us?
We are, Commissioners, we are, we are in a working session here. You understand that testimony is over? It's up to us now to rule on this application.
I am approving your motion, including the patio, with the modifications of the fence that I suggested.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Pastor, since the applicant has moved that, I don't know how you can make a motion or endorse that. Yeah, it goes against what the applicant has requested, so I, I, I'm.
Tell me the applicant what you should or shouldn't have had. And you know how to refuse that.
I'm going to approve this application.
For parking lot? That's the way this application is gonna go down on the preliminary?
With parking lot, Mr. Chairman, that makes your application.
It does make you that, Commissioner, Pastor. Do I have a second to accept this application for parking?
I'll say it in the motion.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. On a long way around. Madam Secretary.
Ms. Chairman, how is?
Aye.
Commissioner Fernando.
Aye.
Commissioner Castro.
Aye.
Commissioner Oden.
Aye.
Commissioner Silva. And Commissioner Riquelme.
Aye.
Chairman, how?
Aye.
I'm gonna call for five minutes session.